I'd like to welcome everyone to our last meeting of October. And Councilman Kyle Newton will have the invocation, and then Councilman Don Chapman will have respects to the flag. Please rise.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closure as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that what we do here today is for the greater glory of you and for the service humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think everyone has seen the minutes from our October 10th meeting. Do I have any questions or anything before we approve them?
I move they be approved.
Second.
First by Mr. Loffredge, second by John Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Old business, our first item of old business is request consideration of ordinance 1619 to revise the PDD document for the village at Glenwood, located at the corner of Glenwood Avenue and Blackley Street. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this issue was, has been around for a while in terms of its past history. And what you heard at the last meeting and at the planning commission meeting earlier this month was a request to change the PDD document, which has the same effect as a rezoning, because the PDD document is the zoning ordinance for this particular piece of property. The, a couple of the main points in revising the document itself, this is still to be a single-family residential development. One of the main revisions to the PDD document is the decrease in the total number of homes to be built. That decrease would be from 110 homes down to 85 homes. It also increases some of the lot sizes, the minimum lot size goes up to 4376 square feet, the maximum lot size to 13,270. And there were some additions in terms of, and improvements in terms of the landscaping and screening requirements. It also eliminated some language that was difficult in terms of the development plan to regulate. So it certainly is a document that is more in keeping with the neighborhood in terms of single-family houses and average lot sizes. And I think it's an improvement absolutely over the light industrial zoning of years past. One of the questions that arose at the last meeting was relative to any knowledge or information that we had concerning EPA or DEHAC concerns, environmental concerns for this particular piece of property. And to the best of our knowledge, there are no DEHAC or EPA mandates for any kind of environmental concerns on this particular piece of property. There may be concerns about or issues relative to other properties, but as it relates to this particular property in question, there is none that we are aware of. And I would say that certainly, given our past experience with environmental issues, when it comes to DEHAC and EPA, it usually, the triggers for that, any type of remedial action, the trigger is usually when the land, any type of land disturbing activity takes place, a property owner may be required to do something with a piece of property. But as far as we know, there are no outstanding environmental issues with the property that we're talking about this evening. Mr. Curtis, the applicant, is in the audience this evening, if there are any questions. And you also have, Ms. Lawing is in the, from the neighborhood who's here as well. We, the staff, has received no additional calls or concerns from the public since our last meeting on this rezoning request.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Let me clarify, this is for second and third reading. I forgot to mention that before I called on you. Is anyone from the audience, neighborhood representative, anybody that would like to speak? If you would, come on down and state your name and your address, and we'd be glad to listen to you.
Members of the committee, my name is Ray Lawing. I reside at 1,000 Glenwood Avenue. Is that better?
[laughing]
And I'm not here to do any rebuttals. I know that this is going to happen. But from the last meeting that I attended and from my communication with Mr. Curtis a little while ago, I'm still under the impression that the type of houses and the price of houses is still a maybe, should be, could be. And until, until I hear something from somebody who's actually going to be building these houses and setting these prices and giving us an example of what this neighborhood should look like after this is complete, I would ask that you not do a second and third, you know, approval, that you might just do a second one and give us a chance to hear what the builder has to say. Because it's going to affect a lot of lives in that neighborhood. And I thank you for your attention and for your patience. I know it's been a long time, but it's been a long time for us, too. And again, I'm really not concerned about it. Most of you were not here for the last two sessions, but for those of you who have been so patient, I will tell you that, you know, we're not really concerned because our church went around and anointed every inch of this property 11 years ago. So it's under God's care. So, and he's protected us through-
Two builders.
So, we know that he's got it. And whatever is going to be put in there, it's going to be used for his glory. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lawing.
Thank you, Ms. Lawing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chapman.
I just had, the question regarding the environmental, they did a phase one study, I guess, on the property. So that's, we're not clarifying it, the developer has, correct?
We're not clarifying that, but if Mr. Curtis wants to address that.
I just, because you would say, "we feel," I just want to make sure that-
We did check our records as far as to determine if we had any knowledge from EPA or DEHAC about any mandates, and we do not.
Okay. Now, I'm dressed for a Little League football game that I gotta catch here in 7:15, so anyways. But no, I did do some research, because honestly, I even had some concerns. But there is, it's really a good ways from this piece of property, but I was able to find an EPA letter on the property. It's on down Glenwood a little bit further. There was a, an EPA issue. It's on a piece of property that's currently owned by Grand South Bank. And that, but there's nothing that impacts our property that we're aware of. So, I mean, we've done some studies and nothing has come up. So I think there, you know, there could be some other issues on other properties, but nothing that's related to ours, so.
Okay. And one follow-up question, just that, we typically don't, don't want the PUD document to establish price ranges, because price ranges typically fluctuate from the economy. And, you know, what something is five years from now is different than it is today, and so-
Yes. That's, that's absolutely correct.
But usually, the square footage is a multiplier of what the house will cost as a minimum and a, you know, and a maximum. So, if that helps you in any way.
Right. And I've talked with Ms. Lawing a couple of times, and the, and I'm sure she thinks that I'm a little non-committal, but I mean, obviously, the market does drive that price. We know what we believe that they will be. And so, I mean, and that's what I stated in the last meeting. But I think at the end of the day, I think the neighborhood's going to be happy with what we put in place here. It'll be a nice development, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
Just a point of clarification. I know Ms. Lawing talked about, she, her wish would be that we would approve it on second reading and then wait to get some further answers on third reading. But just a point of clarification, I think, once it's approved on second reading, it's a done deal. Third, third reading is just a formality. So, there is no third reading once it is. If there is a third reading, but once it's approved on second, then it's pretty much in place. So I just want to let you know that, not to think that something can change on third reading, because it won't.
That's correct.
Not sure why we do that. And I think, and I, I would like to say, I think it's a good point, when you're talking about square footage of houses. And the amount of square footage that you're planning for these houses is what, again?
I would think that the majority of the homes would be in excess of 1,500 square feet. You know, I would just think that most of the stuff you're going to have is going to be at least three to, you know, somewhere in the three to four bedroom range. These homes will have garages. I mean, it's going to be, I think they're going to be, I realize not knowing is kind of the tough spot, but I think at the end of the day, they'll be satisfied with what's there.
But the square footage has a lot to do with it, though. The fact that it's going to be, they were going to be fairly good-sized houses-
Right.
-is a good, good point. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this on the second reading.
Have a motion by Mr. Loffredge, the second.
Second.
By Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion, we accept it on third and final.
A motion by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We move along to our new business. Item number one is request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to annex and zone to R15 single-family residential, approximately 4.7 acres on Rogers Road. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This piece of property is owned by Hospice of the Upstate. They own property directly across Rogers Road, which is where their, the Hospice of the Upstate and all of their offices and residential facilities are located. The fact that Hospice owns the property across Rogers Road, this 4.7 acres, they simply want to annex this into the city like the rest of their property. This would remain zoned, or excuse me, would be zoned, single-family. The Hospice has no plans for the use of the property, other than when they acquired it, they did so really as a protective measure for their own uses and main facility protection. So, this will go to your planning commission at the November the first meeting. And again, this starts your public process for annexation and zoning.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. If I have any questions?
Make a motion, we refer to the planning commission.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Loffredge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we'll send it to the planning commission. And that, just for, that's the field where all the deer always stay, right past-
Okay.
House.
Have a seat.
Our second item of business is request consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at 913 East Market Street. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a piece of property that the city of Anderson owns. And we were approached by Rosita Presley, who requested our consideration for selling this piece of property. She has relatives that live next door and has expressed interest in acquiring this property from the city. She has agreed to pay the sum of $3,000, which we feel is a reasonable price for the property. That is what the tax value of the property is on the tax books. We think this is a good move for the city of Anderson, because it puts property back on the tax books. It may have the opportunity for it to be put back into productive use, as Ms. Presley's relatives live next door, and therefore, she has an interest in this particular piece of property. So the fact that it will be maintained by someone other than us is certainly good for us, and we like the idea of it being put back into productive use at some point in the future. And it can be used, should they want to use this for building a new dwelling on. The lot is previously platted, it's zoned properly, and can in fact be used for new residents, if that's what she desires to do. We would recommend that the ordinance, that you pass the ordinance for the sale of this piece of property.
If I have any questions, comments?
Maybe discussed this last time, and I move that we authorize a sale of this property.
Yep, first, second, second by Mr. Newton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three is to request, request consideration of the accommodation tax advisory committee recommendations. Ms. McConnell? Seems like I'm getting a call on you a lot, Ms. McConnell.
Well, this is probably one of the longer items on, on your agenda. This is a good thing, that we're, all of the things that we've considered tonight are certainly good things. But this is an opportunity where the council has, once a year, the ability to take accommodations tax dollars, which are those heads-in-beds dollars that we receive, and share that with the community for a variety of events and projects that are tourism-based. The, this year, we received 25 applications for projects, and we have $109,958 to allocate. The good thing that I will tell you straight off the bat is that every applicant received some funding. Most of those applicants were fully funded, a few were not. And I will try to touch base, touch a little bit of the details on some of those. Just kind of as a reminder, this did go to your accommodations tax committee on October the 6th. The committee spent a great deal of time reviewing the applications, discussing the events, and trying to determine how these projects would generate tourism and continue to see those dollars roll over and increase in the, in the future. Just to remind you, the committee members are Rebecca Purifoy, Cindy Suddles, John Doolittle, Larry Lynette, Vicki Color, Summer Fredette, and Chris Glenn. And if these positions are mandated by state law, that they be in the lodging and hospitality and some at-large positions. So, these committee members really can talk about how different events impact their businesses, or the, like our downtown restaurants, or our restaurants as a whole, or our hotel industry. So they have true knowledge about that. Just very briefly, the first applicant is the 24 Hour Musical Incorporated, and the project is Shakespeare in the Park. This is our third year of having Shakespeare in the Park, and it's four free performances that will occur during June. They requested $4,000, and the committee recommended 4,000. The second one is the Anderson Area YMCA as the applicant, and the project is the People's Bank Midnight Flight. Just a reminder that this is the largest nighttime road race in the southeast. So you'll hear tonight in these various projects and applicants that there's some longstanding events that have taken place and have garnered a great deal of attraction in terms of what they do. The 2017 event will be the 40th anniversary for this event. And it's estimated that they have about 7,000 people that encompass the spectators, the runners, the families, and people who take advantage of this event. They requested $3,000 and are recommended for $3,000. The Art Center annually applies for their annual program of events. They're open six days a week. They have over 205,000 people that attend events during any given year. One of their big events is the jury show, which happens in the spring, and it brings 251 tri-state area artists here for competition. So, the funding that they requested was 20,000. The committee recommends 15,000 as an award to the Art Center. The Anderson County Museum, this is for their annual museum event promotions. And again, another long-term participant in our community, the museum will celebrate 33 years as a collecting museum. It's the second-largest history museum in the state, and it is also designated as a heritage corridor stop. They requested $6,000, and the committee is recommending $1,000. Remember that these dollars are advertising and promotions dollars, which is where these dollars are used for all of these events. The fifth applicant is the Anderson County Senior Citizens Program. What seems like a small event is the Electric City Sectional Bridge Tournament, but each year, they knock our socks off with what they're able to do. They're expecting 700 participants to come in from Beaufort, Charleston, Columbia, Hilton Head, Aiken, Leesburg, Greenwood, Gaffney, and then locally here, too. They've requested $1,000, and the committee recommends $1,000. The Anderson Convention and Visitors Bureau, this is for their annual advertising. The funds will allow Visit Anderson to assist the city in advertising, marketing, and promoting the city, and particularly downtown. This is print advertising in several different magazines. The request was for $20,000, and the committee recommended 10. And I will share with you that the committee's rationale for this was, the CVB is moving from under the umbrella of Innovate Anderson to be a standalone organization. Because it's in this transition period, the committee felt like because the funds requested were to specifically promote the city, and especially downtown, the committee chose to allocate those other dollars to the city of Anderson for the hospitality program and for helping guide and direct those dollars more appropriately for downtown and the city of Anderson. So the dollars, while they're not going directly to, some of the dollars are going directly to the CVB, the other dollars are being allocated for those purposes, but to a different entity. The CVB also asked for marketing dollars for updated brochures, rack cards, and other promotional materials that help the CVB promote our community. They requested $15,000. It is an odd number in the committee's request for $1,908.02, only because they waited until the end after the funds were distributed. Y'all have seen this before, where there's a leftover amount of money, the, they usually try to distribute those dollars so that all of the money gets distributed in a given year. Anderson University, this is one you've seen before, the Anderson Senior Follies. They have an audience base of 5,500, and they estimate that 3,500 of those are tourists. They do have charter buses that transport people for their production. The, they are a destination for three touring companies that represent South Carolina, North Carolina, and Georgia. The request was for 3,000, the committee recommends 2,000. Balloons Over Anderson is in its eighth year. They estimate that the attendance is 6,000, with about 43% of those being non-Anderson County residents. The event, if you will notice, it has taken place, it was October the 7th through the 9th, but remember, the committee met on the 6th. Their timing of this festival or this event always falls at the time of our committee meeting and your recommendations. So, it's not unusual that we're approving this essentially after the fact. And our process does require that all of the participants, excuse me, all of the applicants are, they spend their dollars first, and we reimburse them for their eligible activities. The 10th applicant is the Belton Tennis Association for the Palmetto Championships. Again, this has been around since 1957. They have over 430 participants. Anderson is fortunate that we, we have the hotels here, so we get the benefit of those visitors. About 2,000 of those staying in Anderson for an average of three nights. The matches are held throughout Belton and in Anderson for four and a half days. A good event, they recommended 35, they asked for 3,500 and are recommended for 3,500. The next four are city of Anderson applications. The first one is for movie nights in Carolina Renn Park. Has proven to be a very popular venue and activity in Carolina Renn Park for six times during the year. We, it's free, it's in a beautiful place, and we estimate 3,500 people attend these events annually, and a portion of those are considered tourists. We requested 2,500, and the committee recommended 2,500. It's almost time for Holiday Ice, which is your next event that will begin in November. If you remember, last year, we had approximately 7,000 participants, not spectators, 7,000 participants from 32 states and two foreign countries. The event will occur this year. The season is November the 18th through January the 16th. And the requested amount was $5,000, and they recommended for that amount. Fresh Taste is the next event put on by the city of Anderson, and it occurs October the 4th, which we just completed that event this month. We requested $2,750 and are recommended for that amount. The hospitality program, I alluded to that earlier. This is a hospitality program and regional advertising for downtown. This is probably, your economic development staff would tell you that this is their number-one priority in terms of our ability to promote and advertise downtown. The materials for- The materials for marketing and advertising are placed in our hotels, our welcome centers, individual businesses, and the CVB. We requested $5,700 and the committee recommended 10. So that's where the money that didn't go to the CVB is going to supplement the hospitality program and regional advertising.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, sir.
On that previous one on, on the CVB, they, they asked for 20, we only gave them 10, but the difference that they're giving, the hospitality program will be like 4,300.
4,300.
So it's not, it's not the difference, I think you said they're giving the difference from the CVB over to here, they're not giving the difference because we applied 57 on our own, so they're only just actually giving 43 instead of 10,000.
That's correct, that's correct. I, I was rounding the numbers off, but you're absolutely correct.
Right. In the previous year, the CVB didn't even apply in this category.
I think that's, that's correct, they, that's right. Anything else on the, that? The Electric City Playhouse is requesting $1,000 and are recommended for $1,000 for their 33rd year, and this is for advertising their 2017 season. They attract people from the upstate, North Carolina, Georgia, and Tennessee. This is a new applicant, the Electric City Quilt Guild. This is for the 2016 quilt show promotion. You will remember that we are a, on the, at, being part of the Heritage Corridor, we also collaborate with the Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail. So this quilt show will be touring in August of 2017. They generally attract over 800 visitors, including 170 vendors and volunteers. They asked for $700 and were recommended for that amount. Another local event is put on by the Foothills Alliance. It's the Festival of Trees, which occurs, excuse me, November the 16th through the 19th. This is an event held at the Civic Center, requesting $500 and were approved for 500. The GAMAC Greater Anderson Musical Arts Consortium, they're requesting $3,000 for their 2016-17 concert season. Another longtime organization here, it will have, celebrate its 26th concert season. They have more than 11,000 patrons this year, and as many as 30% of those in attendance are typically from outside Anderson County, and they're recommended for $3,000. The next four are from the Main Street Program of Anderson, the first one being for the Main Street Block Party. This event is for April through August of 2017. They're requesting $10,000 and are recommended for $10,000. The funds will be used for ads in newspaper and social media. This again is the Thursday evening event that takes place in Carolina Renn Park. Their second application is for the Day Before Father's Day Car Show, which continues to gain in participation and, and those who attend the event, participation comes from people from Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, and also local people as well. It is a classic and vintage car show held in downtown. They are recommended for $5,000 and that's what they asked for. The Main Street Program is also asking for $2,000 for the Holiday Walk and Tree Lighting that will be here before you know it in December and kicks off our annual holiday season downtown. The last one for Main Street is-
You didn't mention what they got.
I'm sorry. They requested 2,000 and they are recommended for 2,000. The regional advertising is the next Main Street Program application, and this is promoting downtown to visitors through billboards, radio, print ads, and social media. They requested $15,000 and are recommended for 15. Meals on Wheels has an Oyster Roast fundraiser annually. They've been doing this for the past 12 years. It has quite a following. Their estimated total attendance is 600 with about 120 being tourists. They requested 2,000 and are recommended for 1,000. And the last two, one is the Oconee Conservatory of Fine Arts and the Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail. This is their promotion plan for 16 and 17. This is, already had one application about the quilt trail, this one is different. This is actually advertising the Heritage Quilt Trail that represents Anderson, Oconee, and Pickens Counties. They requested $600 and the committee's recommendation is $600. And the last one is the Market Theater Company. For their 2017 season, they put on five plays and musicals, which is their main season, but they also do a variety of other types of entertainment, including intimate plays, educational camps and workshops, and community events like comedy nights and other forms of entertainment. So this will be their promotion using posters, flyers, email, billboards, newspaper, particularly using different tourist demographics. They expect 6,000 attendees at that, that variety of shows with about 15% of those being tourists, requested $7,000 and recommended for 7,000. So I know that's an awful lot that's before you, but again, the good news is that out of those 25 applications, everybody received some funding, and it was wonderful to be able to have 109,958 dollars to distribute, and we certainly thank the committee for their diligence in trying to learn all the details about these applicants. The staff would recommend approval of the committee's recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell, and also thank you to the ATAX committee members. As we've heard, there were a lot of requests and it's a very detailed process that go in. I'd entertain any questions? Mr. Chapman?
I don't have a question. I'd say make a motion and appreciate the, the committee as well for all their hard work, but make a motion for general approval.
Have a first by Mr. Chapman, second by Dr. Thompson. Any other questions or? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. All right, our fourth and final item of new business is request consideration to purchase Office 365 licenses and integration services. Again, Ms. McConnell, if you've caught your breath from that briefing you gave us on ATAX?
I'll, I'll be a little more brief this time. This is about our email system. Bear in mind that as far as the funding for this, these are budgeted funds in our IT division. We're, what's, before you tonight is a smarter way of spending the dollars and taking advantage of technology in a new way. I'd like to ask Mark Cunningham, who's our information technology director, if he'll tell you more about those details.
All right, thanks. Just as Linda said, this is just a different way of licensing our software that we purchase from Microsoft on an annual basis. Currently, our email server is Exchange 2010. We received notice last year that it was approaching end of life within a year, so we knew we were going to have to do something to upgrade. So our options were to upgrade the software, continue hosting it in-house, and that would have been around 10,000 for that portion of it. And then the second option, which we're proposing now, is to go to Office 365, which is a hosted solution. Lots of municipalities around the state have gone to 365. We've talked with several of them at our different municipal association meetings, and through those conversations, we found vendors that are experts at the transition from a hosted exchange environment to a off-site cloud-based Office 365 environment. And so we went through interview processes with those people that we, that had already had experience in the state, and we found that Liftoff was the most qualified vendor to help us through the process. Basically, what we're doing, right now, we, there are two options when you buy Office licenses. You can either buy a volume license agreement, which has always been very expensive, or you can buy a end-user license agreement, which basically lives with the piece of hardware. So when we, and that's what we do now. When we buy new computers every year, we buy an end-user license, and so that Office license lives with that piece of hardware. If it breaks, we've got to buy a new license. So we're basically changing the way we do these licenses. Right now, we're buying 220 Exchange online licenses. These will be mainly for people in the police department and for people that don't have a computer, so it'll just be an Exchange email-only license. So that totals $9,240, which is actually $3.50 a month. We're also going to be buying 125 Office 365 licenses, and that's a $9,000 annual charge or $6 a month per computer. These will be for our main city employees that have a computer, that use Word, Excel, things like that. We're also buying 345 migration licenses, and this is the tool that'll help us migrate our users from our existing environment to the new one. That's a one-time charge of $12 per user, 4,136.55, and then Liftoff will charge $5,000 to assist us through this process of transitioning into Office 365. You know, there are a lot of benefits with this. Employees are going to have access to their email and all their documents from anywhere that they have the internet. So if any of you have used Dropbox, OneDrive is very similar to that. So anywhere that they have internet, on any connected device, they'll be able to access that. Office 365 is the only cloud service that's been vetted and approved by SLED. We are going to be on a government cloud, so that's even a higher level of security. We will also, by doing this, by switching to a cloud-based solution, we'll be able to reduce the amount of storage we have on our network, so that, that'll free up storage down the road, so we won't have to expand our storage in the future as soon. We'll also be able to save money and space on our backups. The one great thing about OneDrive, it does versioning, so it'll save the last 20 versions of every document, so if we ever have any type of document corruption from, you know, any type of ransomware or anything like that, we'll be able to retrieve those documents, back 20 versions. And, and that's basically it. I can give you any more details if you have any questions, but we think this is the way of the future, and I think seven other municipalities in the state have already made this move, so it's not something new. It's, it's just the way everyone's going right now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Do we have any questions, Mr. Chapman?
The, the, does any of these licenses allow for any of our employees that have, you know, a desktop but also have a take-home laptop, that they can share that license?
The, the license is per user, it's not per device.
Excellent. Because that cuts down a good bit of our-
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The recommendation is approval of the purchase from Liftoff LLC in the amount of $27,376.55, and that includes the software licenses, licenses and the integration.
Thank you.
And it's coming from the IT budget?
Yes. Yes, it is.
So since the, the bulk of this is from the police, when, when we budgeted it out of their budget?
No, it, it, we take care of all of our, essentially all of our IT needs when it comes to that. Main budget is lodged in Mark's IT division.
Mr. Chapman, I guess the only, everything is proprietary, so there's no reason to bid it, I mean, it's-
The licenses are coming from Microsoft.
Right, so it's all proprietary, the only $5,000 is that-
The $5,000 is the only thing that's not.
May I move the approval of this request?
A second. First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Loffridge. All those in favor? Opposed? It passes. Administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell?
We have events to share with you this evening. We're almost at the end of October, but we do have one of our community meetings on Thursday, the 27th, and that's the Concerned Citizens of the East Side at 5:00 PM at Hope Baptist Church. And then November gets off to a bang with the ABC Community Meeting on the 1st at Taylor Memorial at 5:30. The Veterans Day Parade on Sunday, the 6th at 3:00 PM downtown. And then we have the Anderson County Municipal Association Meeting at 7:00 PM on the 10th in IVA. Bear in mind, we'll be closed for Veterans Day on Friday, November the 11th, and then on Sunday, the 13th, we'll have our All Saints Day recognition at 2:30 PM at Old Silverbrook, excuse me, at Silverbrook Cemetery. And that gets you halfway through the month of November. That's all we have.
Yes, sir.
Just like to mention, October, on October the 29th, which is just coming Saturday, from 11 to 3:00 PM at the Anderson Rec Center, men at work is having a Father-Son Day, encouraging all fathers to bring their child out for a, a day of fun and games, free food, just trying to connect young men with young men, because there's a lot of young fathers out here nowadays, and just trying to reconnect that, and if you don't have a son, there's a lot of children in our housing complexes who would like to have a role model to take them out that day, so I would encourage you to go out and find a young man and take with you to the rec center from 11 to 3:00 PM on this Saturday. And then also in November, before we meet again, I guess we'll have a new president here, so I would hope that when that takes place, we'll have a president who is all about diversity instead of division, so I'll just leave it with that.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. The, I would like to say thanks to all the people that put on the, the applicants who put on the events. I know Kerry Jones is here from the, from the block party and everything he does, and we certainly appreciate it. Is anybody else here, applicants for the ATAX? With that, I know that there's, those were a lot of great events, and Kerry's been involved a long time with our downtown, and we appreciate all you do. With that, I would say we adjourn.